All right, I'm gonna go ahead and start the recording. We have Commissioner Feeder on the line with us on our Zoom call, so we'll go ahead and get started today. It is 11:01 a.m. today on August 18th, 2021, and this is a special meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners for the purpose of, sorry, let me pull it up here, for the purpose of consideration of the Newmont mining easement. And then Newmont Mining Resurrection Easement and consideration of the Jackass Jamboree Special Event Permit Application. So I think what we'll do is we'll start first Commissioner Feeder with the Newmont Resurrection Mining Easement Agreement. And so it's my understanding that we have not at this point heard back from the insurance company regarding this easement, and so we still have some concern kind of hanging out there. Did you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. We're in touch with CTSI, which is our liability and insurance carrier, and we just have one or two sort of final legal questions we have been promised an answer by the end of today. Just in terms of what our current coverage covers and whether we can extend it to handle the situation of this easement on a private land that might still be entered into by that mining company. So we unfortunately need to drag out another day or two before we have all the information to make a decision.
Okay, so let's go ahead and table this item to our next regular commissioner meeting, and that way we will ensure that we have the information that we need to make a decision on that access agreement. So we'll table that Cindy to September 7th. Okay, thank you. Okay, and so with that, we'll move on to the next thing on our agenda today, which is a special event application for the Jackass Jamboree. And with me here in the room today, I have Paul Clarkson, Anne Schneider, I'm sorry, what's your name? David Carner as the applicant and Marla Bond from Building and Land Use as well. So Anne, I'm gonna turn it over to you so that you can talk through the permitting process, where the application lives within the permitting process, and what brought us to the point for board consideration today.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Marcela. So staff sent out the Jackass Jamboree Special Event Permit to all of the review agencies. And we needed, through that process, we've had to get various additional pieces of information. A couple different risk management plans. The first one that was provided needed more detail to it, so we have received a second risk management plan. There were private landowners, BLM, Forest Service. As far as access issues, we have heard from BLM and the Forest Service that BLM is allowing access through their lease agreement with the property owner for an organized group recreation use. And so they do have permission from BLM under the access agreement that the applicant currently has for Anna's cabin on his private property. Believe that he is working with the private landowner to do a lease agreement in order to provide parking, and the Forest Service has come back with staying as long as all of the camping is done on private property. They are not going to pursue a special event permit for, from the Forest Service. And those are probably the three aspects of the application that I've had a positive response from. The other areas that I have had not favorable responses are I, from all of the Lake County Review Agencies. I've had a basis of concern that results in a denial of approval of the application. And a lot of those members are on the call today, so I'm gonna let them each speak. But I will, or if they would like to, but the general consensus was based on the location of where the event is and no ability to have a second means of egress. As proposed, I think the applicant may say that he's working with Climax to try to acquire a second means of egress, but as the applicant, application was submitted, it was one way in, one way out, and the can, the quality of the road and quality of access lends itself to not being conducive for accessibility for emergency response. And then our partner CDOT had a strong objection to the impact to the highway, given the closures that the state is experiencing due to a variety of different reasons. They were very concerned about people accessing the event and leaving the event. And they have contacted Lake County, both Allen Club and Dan Russon, to say that they are genuinely concerned about what the potential impact could be. And they are partnering with Colorado State Patrol to be watching if, if Lake County does permit, grant approval of the permit. They will be on standby to actually shut down access entry to the event in the event that there is a perceived threat to the highway system or an impediment to the traffic. The applicant has, in an attempt, I think, to help mitigate that concern, has arranged with White Mountain Tourist John Herger to do parking and shuttling from that site, from the zip line site, further along 91 to the south in an attempt to kind of, I think, help mitigate that concern. However, I've sent that along with the new management, the risk management plan out to CDOT to see if this increased their comfort level. I've had no response actually whatsoever, whether that, that it does or does not alleviate that concern, but I guess most importantly, I have not received that it does not alleviate the concern. Also, I sent out the new risk management plan to the to all of the review agencies to ask if it reduced or eliminated their concern, and I overwhelmingly got back, except from the only, the only agency that did not respond, that it did not change their mind, was search and rescue. Every other agency that we send special events to affirm to me that, that it did not change their stance on feeling as though the location is inappropriate. I think it's very important to note for the record that all agencies and everyone involved in this review has not once not seen the merit in this application, the fact that it is a fundraising event, that there's been considerable planning that went into it, and so it was with careful consideration that these denials came forward because, because of the inherent danger that they think is present on the site and an inability to support an emergency that might occur on site, but, but it was, it wasn't an easy decision, I think, for anyone to come forward and say that they couldn't support the application because of, you know, the merit that's associated with it and, and the goodwill that is very apparent in the application. And the obvious, the amount of time and attention and diligence that the applicant has put in. So I just think it's good to note that as well. So this wasn't by any means a cavalier response. You know, I think that there was great consideration that went into it before we, we held a meeting to really vet this and, and see if there was any other potential workaround before those decisions were made. So I just, I just want to share that as well. And I think that brings everyone up to speed from staff's perspective, and then if anybody wants to share specific comments, they certainly can.
Thank you, Anne. So, so I just want to make sure that we clarify that the application has been denied through Building and Land Use because of the referral agency response, correct?
At this point. Yes, this is an appeal to the board to overturn that, potentially overturn that decision.
Okay. Commissioner Feeder, do you have any questions at this point?
Not a question, just to say I'm here with the county attorney, Chris Lloyd, who wanted to
Yeah, and so I'm sorry I was late coming out of the Justice Center meeting, but the other thing I want to offer is the applicant doesn't currently have a solidified agreement with the adjacent property owner. And the, the only route available up to the site right now is across this property owner's land. So it's, if there are issues with, you know, egress, ingress and egress to the site, that's another outstanding issue, and he was waiting to hear as to what happened with the application before deciding whether he was gonna let them have access to his land. So that's still an outstanding item as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Chris. At this, at this, this time, I think we'll hear from our review agencies and then we'll hear from the applicant. So from our review agencies, we have Jeremiah with the hospital, Amber with Recreation, Steve Boyle with the Fire Department, Kaylee Ham with Emergency Management, Michael Irwin and Mabel Bogart from Public Works, and Jackie Littlepage from Public Health. So Jeremiah, do you have any, any comments to make on this pending appeal of this application?
Not really anything that hasn't already been said. The location is just the biggest issue. Like has already been said, the event itself, no problem with it. It was in a more accessible location. It would, I have no problem with it. We just, you know, if anything larger happens than they can handle, we just have no way to get up there. I physically attempted to get an ambulance up to that location, and it's not possible. So it's, it's just the location that's the issue for, for me. If it was in a different location, I have no problem proving the event at all.
Thank you. Amber, do you have any, any comments or concerns right now?
No, Commissioner Marcela, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Jackie Littlepage, do you have anything to add?
Yep, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Hi, Jackie Littlepage, Lake County Environmental Health. I was just typing a last minute question in there for Chris Floyd, if she's on. One of my concerns was the sewage pumper trucks needing to go up or transporting porta potties up to the site. The proposed locations, the porta potties was not so clear and not always the most accessible to the proposed camping or to the proposed event itself. But I was also then curious about this other owner whose access would need permission to get across. And, oh, I didn't hit send. Sorry, the other part of the question was if the sewer pumper truck was to overturn on that road or trying to access the other property, who's the liable person for that sewage spill? So, sorry, just last minute question for legal.
Sure. And, and so Jackie, this is Chris. The, the first one, I think that's part, your first question about access liability, I think that's part of the adjacent owners. And, and one of the reasons the agreement for access hasn't been finalized yet is, you know, wanting to confirm and make sure I know that the applicant has insurance, general liability insurance, they, with the adjacent owner named as an additional insured. And so I think that's pending. So I think in terms of the liability issue, you know, anything that would happen on the owner of the property, you know, if, if there was some sort of injury, it would depend on what caused the injury, and if it's some sort of an attractive nuisance, or if it's, you know, an existing condition that the landowner was on notice of, then they would be liable for that, and that's why the indemnification by the applicant was important to have that insurance in place. In terms of the sewage pumper truck, if they overturn, I would expect that would be on their liability insurance. It would be their responsibility. And so if they take the risk of taking that truck up that road, which as Jeremiah has said, you can't even get an ambulance up, then I think the liability would fall on them for that.
Good to know. Thank you for helping clear that up, but that is still a number one concern on my end is waste removal, waste protection, and impact to that area.
Thank you, Jackie. Definitely appreciate that question. Steve Boyle, do you have any, any additional comments, questions, or concerns to share with the group today?
Commissioner Marcela, the Fire Department does not have anything additional to add. We do agree with my on his concerns.
Thank you. Kaylee, do you have anything to add?
Hi there. No additions, just want to echo everyone else's concerns and support the decision. That doesn't feel comfortable not having that emergency access. Thanks.
Thank you. Michael Irwin or Mabel Bogart, do you have any additional information to add from Public Works' perspective?
We do not at this time. We're just, we're echoing with everybody else. That location, it needs to be someplace else.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we've hit everybody on the call, so I'm going to go ahead and invite the applicant to speak to us a little bit about, about any of those concerns and, and give us a quick presentation. So you're more than welcome to start.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for giving me the time to make this appeal. I appreciate it very much. My name is David Carner. I have been a Lake County landowner for 16 years now, bought the property in 2005. It was a distressed property. There was a Liz Pendants on the, attached to the property related to the legal troubles that the previous owner had by building what I would call a bandit cabin in the IM Industrial Mining District, as well as a violation of the junk ordinance. There was massive amounts of trash and vehicles that were abandoned on the property. I was able to purchase the property from an attorney out of Miami who picked up the tax certificate and then was promptly sued by the county to try to recover legal fees for the last several years of wrangling with this owner and proceeded to clean up the property. Great cost, and, but it also taught me a little bit about how to logistically get things up and down the hill. I was able later, once that was cleaned up, to successfully petition for a change of zoning with the cooperation of my adjacent landowner Conrad Lindis, who has the Power Robinson placer that Christina mentioned. We both got changed to AF Agricultural Forestry, which allows residents. And I was also able to get a CUP for the purpose of using the property as a vacation rental with up to eight people. There were several conditions that were required. One of them was to engage the BLM and lease parking outside of the CDOT right of way. I have two and a half acres that I've rented from the BLM for the last 16, well, probably 13 years. And that is where I, I currently have my guest park. I built the cabin starting in 2009. It took three years. Finished in 2011, got my conditional or certificate of occupancy in 2012, and then started renting the property on Airbnb. So for the last 10 years, I have operated the, my property is a backcountry hut for backcountry skiers and for educational purposes. We have avalanche classes back there. And not once in 10 years have I ever had any incident, any accident, or any conflict with either neighboring property owners, Conrad or Climax, or anyone else, hunters that come across my property to access the, the hunting units that are up there. There's quite a lot of elk. So and it's been, you know, the love of my life. I've, I have a real passion for it, and I enjoy taking people up there. I enjoy land. It's, it's just quite a magical place. So I came up with the idea of sharing it further by creating this event called the Jackass Jamboree, which is proposed to be a music concert. We have four bands lined up to play on September 18th. And on June 15th, I think it was, is when I applied, I engaged services of a production company called Kaya Entertainment, who has quite a bit of experience doing backcountry music festivals. They've had several in Park County and are doing one in Vail this year as well. So I relied on my producer Ben King to make the application and subsequently turned in a emergency management plan, which was requested about two weeks afterwards. I will admit that that emergency plan was insufficient. But I made the mistake of relying on the help that I had hired for the purpose, when really he was, you know, his, his bailiwick was, you know, negotiating with the bands and so forth. Once I started to get the referral concerns back, and they were spotty, at best, just a few, I started to address them. For instance, Jackie Littlepage mentioned her concern about a wetland that is on my property. Just a very small space, probably 20 by 20, that's where a spring comes out of the hill, and there are some willows. And she requested a barrier to be put up. So I agreed to that. She also had a concern about bonfires or campfires or pyrotechnics. And I assured Anne that I would not be using any of that. At the same time, Anne asked me to proactively reach out to the various agencies, and I did. I spoke with in person Sheriff Amy Rays, and she discussed at length with me her concerns. Asked if there was alcohol being served. At the time, we were planning on serving alcohol. We are not anymore. And, and what would, you know, what would be our plan if there were any violent altercations? So I responded to that, and we added that we are gonna have security personnel hired from Argus or Colorado Great Events, I think, is the other one that we've inquired. On all the others, I got no response. I reached out to Jeremiah Grantham, and I did not receive any phone call back. I reached out to Mabel Bogart and did speak to her briefly on the phone. When I, and I emailed her my revised risk management plan, which is quite detailed, and I felt addressed all the concerns about public health that she might have. Reached out to Steve Boyle, left a message, did not get a return phone call. And the other agencies that were mentioned, BLM, did have a good conversation with them, went back and forth on emails about their concerns several times, always adding additional requirements that I promised to do to alleviate those concerns about the parking, and that ended up with a letter of agreement that is included. You should have that. It gives me permission from the BLM. Similarly, with the Forest Service, Rebecca Gardner, I reached out to her, and it was quite a bit of a delay, but they did come back with a favorable letter of support on the condition that I don't have my guests camp on National Forests, which I agreed to. And in fact, in the interim, I spent a week renting a Bobcat Stidsteer with a bucket to, to create additional camping sites on my property. So I've got all the camping sites completely on my property at this time, and I'm not relying on BLM or Forest Service for overflow. I also reached out to Conrad Lindis, my neighbor whose property I do cross on a public road, Forest Service Road 134. It crosses my land too, and I've never prevented, you know, anybody from, you know, their lawful access, hunters or whatever. And in my email conversations with Conrad, he stated that he hadn't, that I had his support, is what he said. We did not have the details worked out. He told me that he wanted to review it with his attorney. And I did have a conference call with Christina and her assistant probably four weeks ago. And I thought it was a successful conversation and that we were moving towards a lease agreement. About two weeks ago, I, when the, the, oh, it, it started looking like there was a possibility that was gonna be denied. I reached out to Christina and her assistant and Conrad and asked them if they had an agreement ready for me to sign, and her assistant's reply was that they would have something by Monday. So here it is, two weeks later, and still nothing. So now I know that they were waiting, I guess, to see if this was approved, which is kind of an indicative of, of, of the whole process. It's kind of a chicken and the egg dilemma, if you will, in that I, you know, and getting the concerns dribbled out bit by bit and trying to mitigate and address them, but not getting any response from any of the relevant agencies. I do want to address CDOT. I reached out to Allen Club initially, and he said right away, he was one of the first agencies to respond, that we could not park in the CDOT right of way. Even though that is a heavily used parking lot in the winter by snowmobilers and, and, and everything else. My, my, my hope is that that parking lot can be repaired to a safe condition, and I want to be a, a part of that process. So when we heard that there was no parking available there, we created additional sites on BLM land, and I also asked Conrad to accommodate 20 vehicles on his little sliver of land that crosses the public service easement that is a gas line cut there, which is a secondary access at the, near the highway before Forest Service Road 134. And, and again, my conversations indicated that there was a willingness to collaborate, but we, you know, had not worked out the details of how much that was gonna cost me. Also, knowing that we still needed approximately 40 other parking spaces, I reached out to White Mountain about a mile down south on Highway 91. Spoke with Ty Bagley and John Herger, and they agreed to take on all of the additional parking, including trailers, and to use their shuttles to bring people to the access point. So I felt like I had completely addressed CDOT's concern about parking in my risk management plan. I have six signs that I'm putting up that say no event parking, as well as access directional signs north and south of the access point, so that nobody would impede the, that access, and everybody would be, you know, shuttled up as quickly as possible to, to the property. By the way, this is called Jackass Jamboree because By the way, this is called Jackass Jamboree because I'm a borough owner, a pack borough racer for a long time. And my thought was to use the burrows as a, as a, as a train to haul equipment up, kind of in the old style, the mining style. And that was a big appeal to our concert producers who thought it was unique. And really, you know, a great way to highlight the history and culture of the area as well as just the scenic beauty of it. I do have a donkey pen constructed on my property. So, you know, there wouldn't be any livestock, you know, anywhere near the, the highway or even, you know, spending any time on the, on the right of way of Forest Service Road 134. Nevertheless, when I attempted to call Alan, he basically ghosted me. I think I've left six messages in the last several weeks, several emails. And, you know, that just has been very frustrating and really reinforced my belief that I was not receiving fair and due process on, on trying to, you know, get this event approved, which by the way, is something that I'd like to do annually. We chose to limit it to two hundred people because according to the special event permit, when you reach two hundred and fifty, you're required to, you know, engage county services like having the presence of a sheriff on site or, or ambulance and so forth. So we made it two hundred so that, that combined with the members of the band and the staff that we had would be well under that, that limit. So I know it probably sounds like a lot of people, but it is something that I think that the property can handle. There's seventy acres. Like I said, lots of, lots of space to have a flat camping spot, lots of space to take shelter in the case of a sudden storm. I E. The cabin. And then I come, came to find out that there was a conference call, a Zoom call with the various agencies and so forth on it. Where they, you know, kind of came to the conclusion that the preponderance of evidence was supporting a denial. And that's when I, you know, decided to appeal to the commissioners. And my hope today is that they will see the merits of this event as benefiting the public as being a good thing for the county. It is a fundraiser for multiple sclerosis. Can Do MS is our title sponsor, who would be gaining a portion of the proceeds. And by the way, this has been called a commercial event. It's, it's not a money-making event. Our budget is fifteen thousand dollars for all the equipment and bands and porta potties and everything. And with two hundred people at seventy-five dollars a ticket, that's fifteen thousand dollars. So we're just simply hoping to break even to, to prove that this can be a viable event for the future. Where we will, you know, hopefully be able to carve out some additional margin where our charitable organization can, can derive some true benefit other than, you know, getting a portion of the vendors and the food or, you know, any liquor sales in the future. We're not doing liquor sales right now. I could not get a insurance for that. We do have an insurance policy, which I have emailed to Christina Floyd as well as all the, the planners here. I believe the, the organ, it's, it's through Farmers Insurance, but the, the underwriter is AKA. And it's a million dollar policy. I paid a thousand dollars for it, non-refundable. It does name Lake County, Lindis Land LLC, Kaya Entertainment. And, and I also promised White Mountain that I would pay for an additional rider to cover them as well. So the event is fully insured at this point. And again, I, I really feel like I've tried to mitigate, to address every single concern that was raised. The question of egress really only came up to me in, in recent weeks and informed me that as a result of that conference call, that there was an objection because of the only one means out. But there's actually a second road and that's Forest Service Road 138 that proceeds north and eventually connects with Highway ninety-one on the Summit County side. That does cross Climax property. They do have new trespassing signs and they do have a gate, but it's an open gate, as I believe is proper because that is a public road. I think they try to make it seem like it's not accessible, but in fact, it is a public road. So I do have a second means of access. Starting about half a mile from the stage site, the concert site. I, I will admit that from there to the concert site is a one lane, you know, narrow dirt road that presents some challenges. But I have in my plan mitigation, mitigation for that too. We have personnel onsite, as I mentioned, security hired, that will move to that site after they've directed traffic at the highway. They'll have radios and flags so that there aren't conflicts, you know, two cars trying to come at each other. And as far as the road being, you know, impossible to, you know, to negotiate in a mass evacuation scenario, I disagree with that. I've just been, just, just this morning have taken two pallets of concrete in a trailer, probably three thousand pounds worth of gear up and down the hill without any incident. I know it well, I can handle it. Likewise, my concert promoter, Kai Entertainment, has walked the land and talked with his drivers. And they have assured me that they can get the stage up and all of their equipment and the bands, which will be staying at the cabin as well as the porta potties. It is not going to be a, you know, a big pumper truck. That probably wouldn't get it up there. But there will be four porta potties on my land and two are proposed to be on the BLM site down at the, down at the bottom on a nice flat space that's already being used for my parking. So our plan is to, on the bed of a flatbed pickup truck, a diesel duly, is to take those four porta potties with a, you know, an amount of, you know, blue, blue water to, and then take those off the bed with a forklift. And, and place them more than fifty feet away from the creek. I've got a site already scraped out for that purpose. So, and then they will be removed the following Monday. So I, I think, you know, some of these objections and concerns, they're certainly valid. I respect them, but I also believe that they can be mitigated. And I would love to have the opportunity to prove that I can safely, you know, handle this. I'm willing to go less than two hundred people. I've told that to, to Anne. Our plan B is to, is to do that. I, I asked her just the other day what it would take to do without a permit and the answer was twenty-five. That's not going to be, you know, sustainable. But if, 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 if it means going with like a hundred, I would definitely be willing to do that. So what I'd like to see is, is an approval by commissioners with conditions and I will meet those conditions. I plan, like I said, I plan on having this event annually and I'd like to do other events. For instance, weddings would be a, a, a good thing. People have already had informal ceremonies, proposals and the like. It's just a very inspiring and beautiful place and I want to make it available and accessible to those people. There was one other item. Maybe it'll come back to me, but I think I've talked long enough. I appreciate you listening and.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Available to take additional questions if anybody has them.
So I see Club M, is that Alan, Alan Club? Alan, this is Commissioner Marcel and I saw that you had hopped on a little bit late while the applicant was giving us kind of an overview of the property and the event. And I also see a phone number nine seven zero three one four zero six two seven. If you can identify yourself and if you have any questions or comments or concerns for the applicant, you are welcome to vet those now.
I appreciate that. This is Alan Club, Region Three. I work out of Grand Junction. I cover the Lake County area for special events. I apologize for being, coming in late. The, the applicant mentioned that the, he would have flaggers on the highway or people helping with the traffic on the highway. We haven't seen any traffic control plans showing that, but we wouldn't approve any traffic control plans that where traffic needed mitigated by traffic control to get on and off the highway. On a commercial event like this, it needs to leave the highway and not have any impact on the highway. That means no backups going up the road or anything like that. That's the main thing we're concerned with. Our jurisdiction, of course, ends at the right of way line. So we've, we've made some comments to the applicant that if he can find adequate parking and, and local approval and cars can turn off of the highway without causing a queue on the highway. You know, people waiting for their turn to get up or get out or anything like that. We, we wouldn't have any objection. We, we're not sure how they're going to do that, but we've, because we've only, I've only seen pictures of the road, you know, Google Earth and stuff like that. It looks like it's going to be an issue under a number, number of circumstances, rain or anything like that. But you folks are local, so you know more about what can get by up there and whatnot. But any, any, anything that needs traffic control coming off the highway is going to be a no from CDOT.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. We do appreciate you being here with us today and presenting us with any additional comments. Does anybody have any questions for Alan at this point? Anne, do you have any questions for Alan, comments for Alan?
No, no, I have a couple of additional items, but.
Yeah, come on up. And then Jeff, I'm going to let Anne speak briefly and then you can, you can chime in as soon as she's done.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. So the, the only, I think, food for thought here and maybe some takeaways from this is that a new event that is got this many moving parts. I would, you know, my suggestion is staff, when I were working directly with an applicant at this point and hearing what we've heard today is that there needs to be more planning time put in there. I know that, you know, his concern about comments trickling in and not knowing that there's, that there's things that are needed. But when you introduce a new event that has, as, as been, has been identified, lots of moving parts and a lot of variables, you know, we come in with an event and then we change midstream to a kind of a different operational plan. And, and a lot of things done in response to things that hadn't been vetted previously or maybe were unknowns previously, that just lends me to believe that more planning time needs to be done. I, I hear that, that you believe you've got a second means of egress, but I still think that needs to be vetted of like how, how that would work. It sounds, as you've described it, it's still, to me, sounds as though there's some challenges there. And, you know, the application is for two hundred and twenty-five people. And, and I think that the applicant's ability to maneuver the road is a lot different than when you have an incident and you have that many people that you have to get out of off-site in an efficient manner. So not, and I think that we've all, like we've all said, we absolutely support and hear the merit of this event. And, you know, and we hear that this is a, a very special place that you very much want to share with the public and in, in a very unique and, and amazing way. But I just think that doing a dry run or a run to just, you know, see if it's, if something's effective or not is probably not in the best interest of the community. Whereas coming in maybe with some planning time and working together collectively to see if this site could become a viable option is, is probably something that might be some next steps again. Or, you know, as we've all kind of said and reached out to, is that, you know, a different venue. I, I know that that's not the goal of the applicant, but this would be a completely different conversation. And very, and we'd be very welcoming of everything and all the hard work if the location was different. Or we've had an opportunity to fully vet this, this location. So those are just, and, and I'm done.
Commissioner Feeler, if you'd like to go ahead and go.
Yeah, a couple of things, I guess. One is, and forgive my unfamiliarity with this, but with, with the details the applicant just provided. That I understand that the camping shifted to being fully on the private land. And I'm just curious if that is, it's, is that sort of eligible within the current applicant, you know, event application process? Or is that, you know, two hundred people camping on private land, is that a separate permitting issue?
Does that change the application?
Or add an additional application that's needed? Okay.
A lot, you know, so there's been a lot of variations to the plan. We've found, we've got different parking, we've got different camping, we've got different emergency egress. So, you know, there's just been a lot of shifting parts. But I think that public health would also like to kind of weigh in on the impact of that much camping on, you know, just looking at, I think we've got seventy acres. So maybe that is consistent. But I think, you know, that's, that's kind of this planning piece of needing time to just kind of vet as, as things are kind of shifting to, to further look into these details. You know, and I just feel that those are things that need a little bit deeper look.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, thanks for that clarification. And then a second thing for me is I did just sort of want to, I guess, respond to the applicant and just sort of point out, you know, I, I totally hear your frustration in, you know, hearing from multiple people and, you know, taking time to get back on different iterations of this. I just sort of wanted to point out that, you know, we get dozens of special event permits or, you know, per, you know, requests for smaller events, you know, through, through the summer. It's a heavy workload to do all this discussion back and forth. So, you know, again, hear your frustration, but there's a lot going on as these kinds of permits come in. And as has been pointed out, for a totally new event and where things are changing in the details, it is a lot to, to, to keep on top of for us. All right, sorry, just reading Jackie's comment. I get, and maybe sort of one actual question for the applicant. If I'm hearing this CDOT comment from Alan, it's the, and the big concern is traffic getting off of the state highway. And I'm just curious if you had any response to that CDOT comment. You know, I, I'm just sort of thinking practically, like, how are you really going to keep that? You know, in, you know, traffic coming in off the state highway. What's your plan to guarantee, you know? What's your plan to guarantee, you know, flagging or traffic control or congestion control to make sure that things don't back up onto the state highway?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. Yeah, it is written in my risk management plan. I've got a 10-page risk management plan that addresses all of those. It includes, you know, using White Mountain as a primary parking area for vehicles and trailers and shuttling people up to my parking lot, which is on BLM land past the access point. So they would be taken immediately away from the highway by some distance of about 100 yards, actually. Currently, the, in the CDOT right of way, that parking area or turnout is huge. It's probably 300 feet long and about 150 feet wide. I've seen it full of, you know, 60 or more vehicles on a winter weekend, which is is pretty difficult, especially because CDOT typically only plows the highway and creates a burn right in front of it, making it inaccessible. So, you know, I would love to have, you know, them plow it. But in the summer, that's not an issue. You can immediately exit the highway, turn out and proceed up to my parking areas. Again, in the plan, we have, as I've responded to this, we have hired security personnel or we have inquired about hiring them and haven't done the contract yet until we get approval. But we will have professionals directing traffic immediately off the highway as well as signage. And that is in the site plan. It's a photo on, I think, page three of my plan. It indicates the six signs that I mentioned saying no event parking throughout that turnout plus directionals 20 feet off the highway, north and south. In addition, the concert goers will be provided with maps upon arrival as well as advance notice of how to access the property and not to stop or back up on the highway at all. If there, you know, happens to be a jam for other reasons, those same personnel will direct people to not access it from that point, but to proceed down to White Mountain where they can park their cars and come up later with one of the shuttles. The other thing I wanted to mention regarding search and rescue and emergency management is that we do have, one of our sponsors is Basecamp Liquors out of Frisco. They're not going to be serving any alcohol, but what they're going to be providing is their four-wheel drive ambulance. It's a Belgian military vehicle that is going to be on site. So we'll have a four-wheel drive ambulance at the concert site. Additionally, in the risk management plan, I've talked about a helicopter landing zone. So I plan to designate a 100-foot by 100-foot square marked with bamboo and paint it with a big H with a circle on a flat spot away from the stage and near the, near the camping in case, you know, that scenario would play out. And we have a physician's assistant onsite who will be manning the first aid booth. She'll have a full trauma pack with oxygen and the ability to manage probably 90% of, you know, any any incidents or injuries that occur. So again, I've, this is, this is the first time I've ever done something like this, too. So I'm, you know, simply made the application, relied on my my producer to draft the first emergency management plan and told me right away that that needs to be more robust. And that's when I engaged my former professor of outdoor emergency care, Brian Rosser, who is an attorney as well. He's at CMC as the professor to help me draft this risk management plan. And so that's where, when I came up with the detail. So there's really only been two iterations of, you know, my response. And and I think that the dribbling out or the back and forth has been mainly through, you know, email and voice contact and personal contact with the various agencies as I've been able to manage or get a hold of.
But your original application didn't have a management plan?
It did not, right. Yeah, I didn't know it needed.
So I, Jeremiah, I'll get to you in just one second here. I don't see anything in your emergency plan regarding mass evacuation.
Not a mass evacuation, just just helicopter.
So if a wildfire tears through that site, how are you going to get 200 people down there?
They'll walk.
Jeremiah, go ahead.
Commissioner Marcel, that was my my comment as well is the the improved risk management plan was much, much better than originally submitted. The back entry, I know it's great, the PA, great. The helicopter landing zone, great, except you don't have a way to contact helicopter to organize landing, I don't believe. But the mass evacuation is the main problem. If you have, you know, if you're taking care of one, two patients, you have a plan for that. If you're taking care of 250 patients potentially, that's where the plan is lacking. That's where the access is lacking. That's where you would need help. You would need help to come to you, and there's not a real good way to do that. And that's the major issue. The the one or two patient issues, yes, you can mitigate. The 250 patient issues, not really.
Thank you. Commissioner Feeder, do you have any further questions or comments? Or Mabel, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just have to agree with Jeremiah. The evacuation or trying to get number of people off, how fast are you going to be able to get them off? But then you still got to get a fire truck up there, and we're not addressing that issue.
The other, thanks, Mabel. The other thing I see in the chat comes from Jackie Littlepage, who said four porta potties may not be enough for the amount of camping on the site. Food vendors and cooking onsite have not been addressed to the best of my my knowledge, but could have been since she lost her her food inspector. Do you have any any comments or questions around additional porta potties or food vendors and cooking onsite for the event?
Yeah, I'm willing to bring additional porta potties if that's a condition. I've never, you know, said that I wasn't willing to to make adjustments to the plan, but that is six porta potties total, two at the bottom and four up top. Are what we calculated was an appropriate amount for the amount of campers and people that would be spending the night. Not all people would be spending the night. Some would be, you know, walking back down later that evening to the cars.
Food vendor, do you have?
Yeah, I do have a food vendor. I have one food vendor, and it's Mo's Barbecue, the new franchisee here in Leadville. Harvey is the owner of that. And basically, we're having the food catered up. He's not going to be cooking onsite. We're going to be, you know, he's going to be using his smoker down here in town. And we're going to be bringing up, you know, pulled pork sandwiches and beans and slaw and having that available for, you know, the campers that don't bring their own food. Most will probably bring their own food since it's also BYOB on the alcohol as well.
So I had forward, me, David, the, Jackie, I had forwarded to David the food vendor, temporary food vendor license from the website to send, because you had another vendor in your initial plan.
Yeah, the crates, yeah.
So so those were provided. I don't know if they ever submitted their applications or not.
Yeah, what I was told by Harvey is that he had tried to reach Jackie Littlepage, but she was on vacation. And so he meanwhile got very busy in opening his establishment in just in the last two weeks. And again, I'm, I'm not talking about going forward without having that application and permit in place. We wouldn't serve food or invite him if we didn't have permission. So I'm totally fine with making that conditional.
I think those applications are online applications, so. But just a piece that, you know, I forwarded a link that you could.
All right. Commissioner Feeder, do you have any further further questions or comments at this point?
Nope, none for me.
All right. Do you feel comfortable in in taking a stab at a motion?
Sure. Let me, I move that we deny the event permit for the Jackass Jamboree event.
All right, I have a second. Is there any further discussion, Commissioner Feeder, from you on the motion on the floor?
Yeah, I think, you know, hearing this and reading all the background documents and having been present at the previous discussion, I think the thing that really sways me at this point is the concerns, especially from the emergency services, you know, that consideration of how to either address, you know, fire or evacuation or servicing, you know, if it's more than one or two casualties, you know, or people needing urgent assistance. I just am not comfortable at this point that we've sorted out how to deal. I mean, mass evacuation for sure, but even if it was, you know, more than one ambulance could service, you know, I just don't see how that gets addressed with the current current layout. So that for me is really the big sticking point.
I think I think for me, just to add to that discussion a little, that's that's exactly where I'm landing, as well as that the mass evacuation plan has not, has not been well presented to us to feel secure in the decision to permit that event. And I would really hate to be in a position where we permitted the event without a properly, proper or thorough mass evacuation plan. And then something happens and and the county is looked at for permitting that event without having that plan in place. It does concern me about about the location, the one directional traffic, the fact that first responders would not be able to reach the location. In case of an emergency, I think, you know, the the thought around the potential makeshift helicopter pad is a great point, but not having emergency personnel there to assist with that evacuation is very concerning to me. And I think these review agencies have done this enough time and put enough thought into reviewing these applications very thoroughly each and every time that they receive one, that that their perspective on events have holds some merit, at least in my perspective. So seeing no further discussion, Commissioner Feeder, are you ready to take a vote?
I am, yes.
All right. All those in favor of denial of the Jackass Jamboree special event permit application? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, agencies and applicant for coming to us today. We do appreciate your time. And we will adjourn our meeting this morning at 12:04 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.